Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll call to order the opening.
Paul, since a lot of this is your fault, why don't you be present in the class?
Absolutely.
Wow.
It's your fault? Wow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the supreme justice for our. So our one and only item on the agenda is number C, discussion fiscal stability planning. So that will begin.
So hopefully it's on. Oh, there we go. Okay, first I didn't hear that it was on. So just as a sort of summary of where we are in our process of developing our fiscal stability plan, when we did our first interim, we recommended to the board to self-qualify, self-certify as qualified status, for which the board did, and the county, Humboldt County Office of Education did concur with that certification. As a part of the certification as qualified, we have to develop a fiscal stability plan to be submitted with our second interim. As part of that process, at our last board meeting, staff wanted some direction from the board on how they would like to begin that process and to go about that process, from which the board directed staff to look at a line-by-line with costs included to the best that we could at this point, for the board to start the process with staff in terms of consideration and then prioritizing. As we know, tonight's just a discussion item, but it certainly will begin that conversation. Part of what we have to address is certainly our ongoing structural deficit, as well as maintaining that positive cash position. As we move further down the budget planning for our multi-years, it will, we'll also need to look at preparing for the proposed budget items that the governor put forward, including addressing transportation and including the potential for a $370 per pupil cut should the ballot initiatives fail in November. So I think that's a brief summary of where we are in our process of developing a fiscal stability plan. So what we have brought forward for the board for our conversation tonight are what you see up on the board, as well as what you have in front of you. So I don't know if the board would like to just go start with number one and move through, if they want a general overview by staff, or what would the board's preference be?
Well, I have questions on every single line, so...
Shall we start with number one?
I have a question before we start gutting programs or considering it. And I asked Paul this question earlier in the week, and I don't know if he's had time to actually get to it. But the budgeted deficit versus the end of the year, the unaudited actuals, I know that for a long, long time, there's been a budgeted deficit, and then there's money at the end of the year, and there's this huge difference between the two. And I had requested going back three, four years, those two numbers, and then to bring into consideration one-time monies and how that fits into it. And if you could just kind of give us an overview, what's been going on? Where are we?
Sure. And unfortunately, I can't completely answer your question tonight. So let me give the answer that I can. And as we look back to 2008, '09 is the last time that the district ended the year without a structural deficit. So we were approximately 1.6 to the positive at that point.
1.6 million?
1.6 million. And I don't have the starting point, but we will put that all together for you. So you'll be able to see from 2008, '09, here's where we budgeted originally, here's what the year actually ended up with in terms of whether there was a deficit or not, and what that change was throughout the course of the year. We went from a 1.6 positive structure, if you will, in 2008, '09 to a negative, or to a structural deficit in 2009, '10, and that was roughly a $2.5 million deficit for 2009, '10.
Now, was that real or projected?
That was real for 2009, '10. I'm not going to go any farther than that. I mean, part of the problem is that you can pick the numbers out of the financials, but there are adjustments that need to be made as you look at that bottom line, whether it be a positive or a negative, negative indicating a structural deficit. And in essence, what you're doing is you're backing out one-time events, whether they be one-time expenditures or one-time revenues. And of course, through 2009, '10, 2010, '11, and on actually into 2011, '12 is the last portion of the ERA funds that really distorted that picture to a great extent. So I'll leave it at that as a very general response, and by the time that we meet next, we'll have more specific and accurate numbers for you.
I'd like to just ask a general question, too. I spent, as you know, a couple hours with Paul this week trying to better understand the budget, and I've been looking through it since then, and I just have a question on the interim budget on page 50, the unrestricted and restricted fund, general fund. And it's just, this is the way I understand it, I'm just making sure if I understand this correctly. This is the balance, this is a balance sheet, right? The balance, page 50. I don't think you're looking at the same thing as me. Oh, yeah, you are, okay. What, down at the bottom here, what is this, what are these funds down here with balances in them?
So this is a breakout of our ending fund balance. And because of GASB 54, there's sort of a restatement of the way that we used to define these ending funds. And if you go all the way to the projected year column down below, you see that some of those numbers repeat from column B to column D. And really, that is reflecting the way that GASB 54 says that you're supposed to treat and define your ending fund balances. So with that as the backdrop, it does take our overall ending fund balance into a great extent, kind of defines into the different categories where it comes from. And I'll pick one out in particular, deferred maintenance. Of our total $6.2 million ending fund balance for general fund, 942,000 of that was in the resource for deferred maintenance. And so the different items that are in there basically are doing the same thing. There's a lottery ending fund balance. Those all feed into the total ending fund balance.
So I guess what I'm asking then is why, is there $942,000 in a fund to be used for deferred maintenance?
Within our general fund, Fund 01, there's a resource that is deferred maintenance. And yes, at this point, well, at this point in time, there was $942,000 in that resource to be used for deferred maintenance.
Okay. And then there's 2.5 million for adult education?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess I'm just trying to understand how we have these balances in the fund but have a deficit, when the fund is showing that they each have these balances in them.
So the structural deficit really is pointing not to what we'll call balance sheet items, ending fund balances, but to your revenue over your expenditures. So revenue minus expenditures plus transfers out from the general fund to other funds other than the special reserve traditionally is what you would point to as calculating whether or not you have, whether you're running a structural deficit or not. Again, with the caveat that you're going to back out any one-time events, which would be one-time funds and one-time revenues.
So the 6.3 is like what's in the bank, and the 2.5 is what our income statement is going to show as a loss this coming year. And so the 6.2 in the bank, if nothing was done, would be, 12 months from now, would be reduced by the 2.5 negative.
Where, where are you coming up with the 2.5 negative?
Well, I'm just repeating what you had said.
No, the 2.5 is showing as a fund balance, not a negative. It's not showing as coming out, it's showing the balance in the fund.
So I'll put another way on the same page, and sorry, I can't show everybody, but we started with the beginning fund balance in our general fund, which is comprised of all the different resources and all the subsets, if you will, ending fund balances, including adult ed, deferred maintenance, so on and so forth. So at the start of the year, we had 9.6 million as our ending fund balance. We ran, basically what we saw was a decrease in our fund balance of 3.4 million, or we're projecting that at the time. And that again is revenues minus expenditures, and then also minus transfers out to other funds. So combining all those together meant that we had 9.4, excuse me, 3.4 million less in revenues than those latter two categories. So you take our beginning fund balance of 9.6, you subtract the 3.4, and that brings us down to the ending fund balance of 6.2. 6.2 is comprised of the different line items that are down below. So it's just taking that 6.2 and giving better definition to it.
I understand that, I understand how it's giving the definition. I guess what I don't understand is how you have an ending fund balance of $6.2 million and have a deficit.
So as part of it, are you asking why we can't use money in those resources to adjust or help out our deficit?
Yes.
Okay, so like with why is deferred maintenance?
Or why can't we use it for some of the deferred maintenance things that we need to do?
That we can, absolutely.
This is just the interim. This is, we're right here, but we still have the rest of the year to go.
So this is the, I don't think you're looking at it, the projected year totals.
And I think, just let me talk a little bit about adult ed, and I may, Paul can help me if I'm wrong with that. I think the money that you see there was the money that we had, we had maintained to go to a particular project in addition to a little extra. So that's why that's been kind of, and now the board has since done a commitment to 1.9 million of those funds. Did it come out of that resource here, or is that separate?
I'm sorry, say it again.
I think the question is for what uses or what purposes can those funds go towards?
Right, I guess, I'm just asking, if these are all balances in these accounts, what can we use this money for?
Right, so the deferred maintenance...
Instead of cutting programs.
And my understanding with deferred maintenance, it can only go towards building?
I understa, yeah.
Yeah, so that one, you know, we are going to be using for roofs, and we're going to be using for a lot of the maintenance projects that we have above and beyond what we have left in the bond that we'll spend at the secondary level. So that's not, funds that we can apply towards our non-maintenance issues?
Yeah, I understand that.
For lack of a better word. And then there's the adult education one, is, and I guess my question to you, is that the money that we then set aside the 1.9 from?
No.
That was different? Okay.
Well, it could have swept through there, but this is sitting in general fund now as one of the resources within, which is just a component of the overall ending fund balance. And we do have the sweep that occurred in 2009, '10 that moves some of those funds out to the capital outlay fund. So I guess maybe, I'll make one more correlation. Even with a $6.2 million ending fund balance in our general fund, with another 1.4 million or so in our special reserve, our special reserve fund 17, our projected any cash at the end of 2011, '12 is 1.3 million. So we don't have just, from my perspective, a deficit issue in which we're continuing to spend more than we're bringing in, we also have a cash issue. So for instance, we say that there's 2.5 million here in the adult education fund in that particular fund balance, which again is part of the overall. So to say, well, let's spend that 2.5 million, we don't have enough cash to spend that 2.5 million. Is that...
Kind of. I guess I, I need to look, learn more about it, I guess, it just doesn't make...
Wouldn't it be correct to say what they do, when we're talking about payments that are deferred from the state, they tell you that you have the money, they tell you that they owe you the money, you have to put it in your budget, but they don't actually give you the money? Nope, that's one example of, it's in our books, it's part of, yep, the state is, this is our income, we don't actually get that money. We have to put it on our books when it's beginning of fiscal year, and they're deferring that payment, not actually giving us the cash until May?
But we are going to receive it.
But you can't spend it if you don't have it. So if you have payroll or you have bills that have to be paid, you're cash short if you don't keep that ending fund reserve cash in the bank? Am I, that make it a little easier?
You're absolutely right. And you're right, that sooner or later, we will catch up and we will receive that cash. But at the same time, that we're receiving the cash for past revenues that we put on the books, we're continuing to defer cash from current revenues, so if we're talking about 2012, '13. So it's a cycle of deferrals, if you will, that means that we keep on pushing out the fact that we're not receiving the cash. And if we continue to deficit spend in 2012, '13, we, here we're projecting a $3.4 million overall decline, and for 2012, '13, we projected roughly, I believe, a $2.5 million decline. So you can't continue to spend more than you're bringing in, because ultimately, that starts eating into these ending fund balances. That along with the fact that we're not receiving all the cash that we're supposed to, at the time that we're supposed to, I think is the answer as to why we can't just tap into those funds right now and use them to protect some of these programs.
Paul?
Yeah.
Question on now, this ballot initiative that the governor's got going. And he talks about the wall of debt. Is that just to pay the deferrals? Is that just to bring it kind of back up in line? Because, okay.
I think the wall of debt is more than just the money that's owed to schools, it's the money that the state has borrowed in general to keep itself afloat. So that wall of debt is well beyond, again, the balances that are owed to schools.
But again, in my layman's term, my understanding of it is the initiatives over a five-year period would help bring the deferrals up so that we're getting the money more likely when we're supposed to than not? Isn't that part of what...
With the tax initiative passing.
With the tax initiative passing, so instead of it being deferred like it is now, we'll get it sooner, but he can't, he doesn't have the money to say, okay, all the deferrals are going to go away, it's going to be phased in, I thought, over a multi-year plan. I thought it was five years, but I could be wrong on that. So yes, we should get some of our money if the initiatives go through when we're supposed to, but not all of it.
And what we can speak to very specifically, we think, in terms of the governor's proposal, is that the roughly $6.9 billion in revenues that he is projecting that would be gained through the tax initiative, we don't gain any new revenues out of that. All it really does is pay down part of the deferrals that have already been out there. So I think the numbers, there's roughly $10 billion overall, and it would pay down by $2 billion or so to bring it down to about $8 billion. And it would also forestall additional deferrals for next year. Again, probably about 2.5 million there, so, or 2.5 billion. All in all, it erases about $5 billion worth of deferrals, but doesn't bring any new revenues to us. It does improve and increase our cash position, which is very helpful. In the best-case scenario says that next year, we lose $375,000 because of the transportation cut.
And maybe this, maybe this sounds like a really stupid question, but just if, because I'm trying to understand this cash, the cash part of it, if these balances that are showing in these funds, like say this, just to pick one right here, this flexibility for categorical programs, whatever, the $327,000. So if that's not cash or money, what is it?
It's an accounting entry that goes on the books that says that we're going to pay you this money at some point, you have to book the revenue right now, but the actual cash that's attached to it will come to you sometime in the future.
So how much money is actually in that account? Is there, I mean, is there some cash in there?
Each, each, each resource, each fund does have its own cash accounting. I can't tell you by looking at this what that number is. What I can tell you is at the end of 2011, '12, our overall deferral, money that we're owed, that we haven't yet received, but yet we're having to book, is roughly 6.5 million.
So that's how much we are waiting for?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so, but we need, for, I mean, we can go on to this, but just for me to start thinking about cutting things, I'd like to know how much we have. I know how, that's how much we're waiting for, but how much is actually there that we could use instead of doing some of these program cuts?
So at the end of 2011, '12, as we project our end-of-the-year cash position, we see ourselves at roughly 1.3, or did as we were looking at first interim. And certainly, we're going to see changes to that as we're moving into the second interim. In fact, we know that our picture will improve because of the fact that the trigger that was expressed and encompassed in these numbers didn't come down as harshly as we had anticipated it to.
Okay.
And that brings back between the loss of the transportation revenues, roughly half, that may change, at least the format of that may change. So the loss of those monies, plus what we brought in additional, that didn't get taken away through the revenue limit reduction, is roughly $800,000.
And then the reserve for economic uncertainties, the 1.3 million, that is cash, or is that money we're waiting for, too?
It's, this will sound funny, but it's either or both. I can't tell you that there's 1.3, I can't say that there's cash that's attached to that particular number right there. As we bring all of our monies together through all of our different, through all of our different ending balances in Fund 01 and Fund 17, at the end of the year, we would expect our total cash to be 1.3 million. Our Fund 17, plus our reserve for economic uncertainties, together with total roughly 2.8 million, with our ending fund balances on top of that, roughly 7.5 million between Fund 01 and Fund 17. So there, I think, is the real metric to look at, that we're looking at 7.5 million in ending fund balances between those two funds, which are the major funds that we deal with, but a $1.3 million cash position. So you can see what a large gap there is between those two.
That's, I understand it a little bit.
I want to apologize for taking the bird walk, but I needed it just as well. Thank you.
I like, I like pictures, and it just, it's a picture, the fund balances are on paper, but there aren't multiple accounts in banks somewhere, and this one has that, this one has that. It's, you know, the money in the bank is all in one place on paper, it's all divvied up into that, it goes to this, correct?
That's right.
Easier to picture my little pie that way.
So how many different bank accounts do we have?
Well, we have probably 10 to 12 funds that we use, and within those funds, there's any number of resources, for instance, in the general fund, a lot.
So when you say funds, do you mean bank accounts, or are you talking about funds in the financial statements?
Funds in the financial statements.
How many bank accounts do we have? If we went down to Bank of America or wherever it is, how many accounts are at that bank?
Well, the strong, strong majority of our dollars are kept with County of Humboldt. So our actual cash is with County of Humboldt.
Basically one.
Basically one.
Basically one, Humboldt County.
Basically one account.
They flow through US Bank and Bank of America to County of Humboldt for the most part.
That's why they're listed on our checks.
Which is the point we're trying to explain to her.
It's hard to understand, is that it's just one account, but it's accounted for on paper rather than in...
Yeah, I understand that part, and I understand that that's just showing, I guess what I'm just trying to understand is how much money is actually there to, for us to use instead of cutting programs. That's all I'm trying to figure, is how much, because it's showing, you know, that there's quite a bit of money there. But how much is actually there that can be used is the question. That's all it is. I understand how it's broken up.
Okay. So are we ready for, to hear the explanations on your draft list?
Or more answered questions? I'm not sure the best way to proceed, but, and obviously, these aren't indicated in this paper in any particular order or preference or priority, so, you know, certainly, I don't want anybody to look and go, oh, number one is the first thing, no, there's no...
If we all have questions about any number of these, if Paul wants to go through line by line and say, okay, this is this, and then we can come up with what questions we have for that item.
Right. Yeah, and that's, I just wanted to clarify that even though it says number one, number two, that isn't a priority number, it's just a listing number.
Right. So for example, child development, what do you mean, child development? You mean eliminate it, you mean reduce it? How much are you reducing it?
And it looks like it actually brings in more than it costs, and I'm...
And so I don't know what you mean when you just say child development.
Right, and that's what we wanted to be able to talk about.
Okay.
Do you mean in terms of the particular program? Is that what the question is? It is, that particular line item is basically the preschool students that we are currently educating at the Winsler site.
So are, it's, okay, so that's something, a start.
Preschool is child development.
Yes.
So when you say, it appears you're saying there's a $61,000 savings by doing what? Do you mean eliminate it or reduce it, or what?
At this point, right. Okay, and at this point, what we did with the majority of them is we indicated what the net savings to the general fund would be if we eliminated.
Okay.
Okay, if, if there are reductions, it will clarify that as we, as we go through. But in this case, we were looking at, you know, unfortunately, worst-case scenario, and for us, we felt that for the board is to know what elimination would look like, because then the board can choose to bill from there or not. And it seemed a little cleaner, I guess, or a little clearer in terms of what the net savings were if we no longer had this program.
Question on Winsler. Now, there's preschool, and there's childcare.
Correct.
And there's a certain amount that Winsler brings in, which is, I guess you could use the word entitlement, I don't know if that's accurate, but for preschool, it brings in X amount. And what are these two figures? I mean, I can't imagine we're running the whole Winsler program on $92,000.
So what this is with the revenues, and on this side, what we've done is we've said our encroachment is roughly $78,000. That's a, that's the money that we are bringing out of the general fund to help support child development. There is another $14,000 already there for ending fund balance. So we're saying that that total $92,000 is, in essence, right now, the cost of running, the net cost of running the program?
Over the income that we derive from it?
That's right.
Right.
There's, the flip side of that is you see the indirect of $31,000. We also get money back.
We charge them for...
Indirect costs, administrative, that type of a thing. So the net of that then is 61,319. So if we, if the program were to be eliminated, so all the revenues went away, all the expenditures went away, we reduced our encroachment, the net of that would be $61,000.
Okay.
Now it makes sense.
Now it makes sense.
Well, you're saying eliminate it.
But again, added to...
But I'm still trying to separate the two apart. The encroachment isn't the eliminate the program. There's an encroachment onto the general fund. But it also produces a chunk of money for preschool?
And we took that into account. What we took is the money that we get from the program was reduced from the cost of the program.
To come up with the $78,000 encroachment.
Those figures aren't inherent, so you're only showing what it costs us above and beyond what we make.
Correct.
That's this number.
Yes.
So if we eliminate it completely, the numbers aren't reflecting what it actually makes.
Right, we did take that into account.
What we actually save having to come out of the general fund.
Correct.
And maybe a way to go about this for, I don't think on the spot, but for a future meeting... meeting.
Right.
If you want to see the entire scenario of child development, which happens to be a fund unto itself, we can say, here are the total revenues, here are the expenditures, here is the encroachment that it takes to balance that fund out, so that all of a sudden, revenues do equal expenditures. And at the end of all that, what we'd see is that we had a $92,000 contribution to that fund, above and beyond the revenues that it receives and the expenditures that it puts out. The reason I bring the indirect back is because that is a benefit that comes back to the general fund. So as I net the difference between revenues over expenditures, and let's call that $92,000, that actually is a negative at this point, the $31,000 that comes back to the general fund, by eliminating all those pieces, the net impact positive of the general fund would be $61,000.
Got it. Now, the thing that I would like to state, though, is that we're an educational institution. Preschool, to me, is extremely important, but I'm not sure that our district can afford childcare.
So what you would like, based on this conversation, is have the two split apart?
What would Winsler like, living on the income that it generates for preschool?
For preschool only.
Is there any savings to do that?
And I'd also like a question answered. Is it possible to trim $61,000 from the operating budget of the whole Winsler program? I mean, if you were presented with, here's an option for the board, we're considering this, but can you take $61,000 out of your budget?
And when I met last week with the directors of some of the programs up there, that's basically the question I asked them, is what would it look like to be operating at, basically, a neutral position, where you're, whatever you bring in equals the amount that, you know, it's a balance.
That's my question as well.
And, well, some of them are here tonight, and again, I didn't give them a whole lot of time, so, but I wanted to start the process of that conversation, so if they're ready, they could report what they have tonight. If not, that would be further direction to come back to the board again, because as you remember, this is just discussion for us to help ferret out what it is that we need to provide you more with, but I know they're working on it.
Paul, I would need to look at the numbers some more, but I did want to say that Winsler is not just the preschool, but it's also our school-age program at Alice Burney.
Could you come to the podium? Do you have to report?
Do you want me to say that?
Just so it's reported.
Okay.
Debbie Brockle Springer, I'm the director, Winsler Children's Center, and I'm just letting the board members know that when you're talking about the budget, you're referring to the preschool, but it also encompasses the school-age program at Alice Burney, which is kindergarten through third grade, and we operate year-round, and it's for low-income working families.
Is that childcare?
It's under the childcare contract, yes, it is.
Okay.
So separating it out, you would pick up that information?
So it only operates after-school hours?
After-school, 2:05 to 5:15, and then during the holidays and parent conferences, and in the summer, we're open from 7:15 to 5:15.
And so with what Debbie said there, if I can back up a little bit, and kind of echoing what Leanne said, really, I think from our perspective, what we're trying to do is list lots of different things that are out there, that we say, okay, here's something, and for the most part, in a sort of a broad-based approach, these are what the numbers look like, and by necessity, we've grouped some of the programs together. And in the child development area, there may be a particular program that runs without a deficit, there may be one that runs in the black, and there may be something that runs even more so in the red, and the aggregate of those is what it would look like here. So hopefully, what we're going to get as we go through this process is that kind of direction. Okay, let's split this out, let's look at this a little bit more in-depth, and that will be helpful to us as we push on those things and come back with better and more accurate, detailed information.
And it's helpful, we're just at the very, very beginning, so, I mean, it's not, we're not going to be running up there and saying, okay, Winsler, bonk, even though somebody has dots. I saw the dots.
And I know the other thing that Debbie's working on, too, is there's some indication that the amount of funds we get back could change in terms of, you know, how if we spend a dollar, we get back X amount, and that proportion may change based on, I can't remember what that tier language was that he was talking about. But isn't there a concern, we may get less back than we have been?
Oh, the reimbursable amount.
The reimbursable amount may actually be impacted by some of the changes, too. So she's trying, as best she can, to get a guess amount on what that might look like.
And have we looked at all, or I don't know, how, if the transitional kindergarten program could work into Winsler in any way?
We actually have. I think we began the conversation of transitional kindergarten with Debbie, because she, being involved with preschool, is very knowledgeable about that. And I think we came up with some licensing issues, and so that didn't look like a viable position for us, because the licensing for preschool is very specific and very strict. And because it's a school-age program, it didn't, it wasn't a viable option. We asked for a waiver, we asked what we would have to do, and...
And as well, the kindergarten, the TK program also has to be comparable to the kindergarten program.
Correct.
In the length of the day, and the other activities that are wrapped around it.
So, and as, I'm going to continue to use this one as just as an example, to try to complete the point, which is, again, really not, these are not recommendations, let's do all these things. These are things that we looked at and said, we know right now that this has a negative impact on the general fund, and so how do we ease the pressure that's on the general fund? And this would be one way to do it. Elimination would be one way. Another way, of course, would be, would be to improve the revenues that come with it. Debbie has a situation where she actually can't increase the number of children that we're providing service for, so that could increase our revenues. A different dynamic that happens, for the most part, throughout the rest of our district, which is really ADA-driven, unless we can get those kids in here, we're not able to tweak that number upwards. The flip side of that is the ability to reduce expenditures, potentially. So if that $90,000 number was able to come down to $30,000, would that make a significant difference in how we view the overall program? So I'm just throwing that out there as an example of perhaps ways to look at this and ways to evaluate it as we talk about them going forward.
Just so that we don't have to repeat this over and over and over again tonight, we ask them to come up with every possible suggestion, even those that we would never do, just so that we can take a look at the different costs involved.
That's what we did.
Just because it's on this list doesn't necessarily mean that we'll consider it when the time comes.
Yep, and it could change, yeah, absolutely. So is that enough information right now for number one? Do we want to move on?
Can we work clearer on what our next step is in terms of looking at this, or do we come back around to that?
My understanding that the next step the board would like is for us to separate out the childcare versus the preschool, and then maybe to have Debbie develop a plan where we would be cost-neutral? Okay, and what would that look like?
Cost-positive would be good.
Well, that would even be better, okay. I'm willing to be neutral at this point.
But don't rule out, if we could actually bring...
If you could actually, like, triple what? Good point. So, item number two on here is the CalSafe program, and that is our Parenting Teen program that we operate. And it is, it is a categorical fund, but it's one of the flexibility funds that we can, we will continue to get for that period of time, whether we operate the program or not.
Is this a program that occurs at Eureka High School currently?
It occurs at the Marshall Annex, actually, currently.
How many teens and babies are we currently working with?
And it varies, it varies year-to-year, month-to-month, and it certainly, we could have anywhere from, I think the maximum that I know that we've had is maybe eight or nine, to one or two. And sometimes, you know, complications occur, and they may be initially wanting to utilize that program, and they end up going on independent study or home and hospital, so they don't then utilize the program. You know, needless to say, when you've got infants that you're caring for, it's a one-to-two staff ratio. So I also can say it is licensed as well, so we do get some income from non-teen parents who utilize that program. But again, it can be some years that we'll have five or six, and some years, we have one or two people utilizing. It's...
By Parenting Teen program, you mean the childcare for teens that are going to school?
Teens that are going to school that have babies.
A little more than just childcare, because the students actually spend one of their class periods or two, that's part of their curriculum, you go over and...
So this is...
Integrated...
This seems to be an example of where, at first blush, it appears that there would be a savings of $72,000 if we eliminated the program, but some of these parents would have to drop out of school, and we would lose the ADA for those students. And so maybe the cost savings isn't quite as high as we're thinking, at least the second year.
Yeah, and that's the unknown factor with this particular program, because some years, it, I'm sure, operates closer to being in the black, and then there's other years where it probably operates most, you know, closer in the red, and then, as you said...
So at $5,500 per ADA, if we lost five students who had to drop out of our schools, we would lose some $27,000 worth of revenue, and so our savings wouldn't be 72, but something a lot less.
If you don't, if we didn't have this program, is there, what is the other option for these kids? Is it the home and hospital, independent study, they still have an option to be able to continue their education?
Well, they could still continue at Eureka High School, or Zobarnum. Some of them do also come from Zobarnum. It's a matter of finding then the care for their child, and that's where sometimes the option does end up being independent study and/or home and hospital, unless they have family that support them, and sometimes they do, but that's kind of an unknown factor as well. You never, you can't, it's not something you can really count on.
It's not just them finding someone else to care for their children, but how do they pay for it as well?
Right.
And whether they can.
Right. Well, and again, that's why I said family members. Usually, if they're going to have, find care at home, it's somebody that's, they're not having to pay for.
Number three.
But home and hospital is always available for that particular reason? You can actually transfer into a home and hospital program because of the issue of childcare?
Not childcare in and of itself. That would be more likely to be the independent study program, where they really only have to go that one hour per week, and then the rest of the curriculum and their, you know, their program is done at home. Home and hospital tends to be for those that have had some medical issues, and high-risk pregnancies or issues afterwards.
On that independent study, I agree.
Yeah, that, but, we have students currently in both, so...
The number three is the half-day kindergarten concept. The real benefit here would be, is if we find ourselves in a situation of needing to expand facilities, bring in some of the portables and the like, by going to this particular model, it would obviate the need to do that. So today, there is no particular savings attached to it, but again, if it transpires that we see enrollment increase to a particular point, this would be a potential remedy for that, so that we didn't have to go out and buy one of the new, a relocatable, so...
That's why there's not necessarily a dollar amount, it's just a consideration for relief in terms of facilities, so that we don't have to spend the money for portables.
But I would think that it would, I would think that it would hurt our revenue side, because I would think that we might lose students if we changed to a half-day kindergarten program.
And that's why we put issues with loss of students due to daycare, it's an unknown factor. Certainly, we've had half-day kindergartens before. I know that the surrounding schools that I've talked to, they don't have a full day like we do, but most of them go a little bit more than a half-day. So it's, it's an unknown, and that's why we didn't put, quantify it with dollars.
With the number of schools we have in PI, time on task is a very important piece of the pie, so I'm not as interested in seeing you spend a lot of time on this one.
Okay.
I'll defer to the rest of the board on that.
I agree. But 24 to 27, at that number, do you lose all of that?
Class size reduction funds?
714,000, all of that goes away from 24 to 27?
No.
Or is it incremental?
There's a sliding scale that starts at about 21, I don't know the exact number it goes, so it, let's say at 21, it's 100%, it's actually, I think, 20.95. You get 100% of the benefit of having the children in the class size reduction. It drops down to 70% by the time you get to 24.95, I believe is the number, and you can go all the way up to 30 children per classroom, actually, 31 for kindergarten, until you lose the funds for that particular classroom on, under the CSR model. I'll also point out, though, that you only get ADA for, or you only get paid for the first 20 in the classroom. So let's say they have 28 children in the classroom, you get, because you're over that 24.95, your multiplier, if you will, is 70%, but that multiplier only goes against the first 20 children.
And what about the other seven?
Those, you don't get...
No ADA dollars at all?
You don't get any credit for them under CSR. You get ADA for them, but you don't get any credit under CSR.
And by contract, we can't go to 31 anyway, so...
Is that 0.95 kid easier to deal with?
Only on a good day.
Okay.
So we've already, what we are at now is at 70% in most of our classes. We're at 24, rather than the 20-point...
In many, yes.
Okay, so, that 714,000 represents what we have at the 70%?
It represents what we have at the different class size levels, K through three, that we are eligible for CSR funds under. So let me, if you had three classes of 20 apiece, each of those children, because you're under the 20.95, you get 100% of your CSR money for them. If you change that to two classrooms at 30, I'll fudge it, because I can do the math pretty quickly, you get 70% times the first 20 in each of those two classrooms, but the 10 from the 20 to 30 in each of those two classrooms, you would lose the funding for.
Okay.
So let's do it the other way, the other direction. If at 24, we get 70%, if we went down to 20, we'd get 100%.
That's correct.
So it would go from 700,000 to about a million. So we would get 300,000 more, and I wonder what, and, not talking about whether we have classroom space right now, I'm just looking at there.
You're making me worried there.
It'd be interesting to see what the additional cost of...
Sure, of the additional classrooms in that scenario.
Of additional teachers, to go from 24 to 20, and whether...
Is that something you'd like information on?
I think it would be...
Just roughly, I don't spend a lot of time on it.
I don't know for sure, I wasn't here at the time, but my guess is if that had been a plus, to keep classrooms at 20, we'd already be doing so.
Yeah, I...
I vaguely remember the scenario.
I do, yeah.
I guess my question is, is there a most efficient scenario?
So maybe 23 is better than 24, or 25 is better than 24?
And it was...
There probably is a tipping point in this.
There's got to be a most efficient scenario.
And from what I recall in the conversations that we had, this was kind of the breaking point, we felt, where it was the most efficient from a fiscal perspective, as well as hopefully from an educational perspective, and a facility perspective, because we had to kind of consider all of those factors when we came up with the 24.
And there were also contract issues, where at a certain point, we were required to bring in aid for so many hours a day, so that number had to be figured in, and the 24 was where...
Yeah, there was originally, but right now, the support that's put in there is not based on that kind of language.
And again, it's not just a mathematical calculation, there's the practical aspect of, do we have the room to be able to expand to that number of classrooms if we went in that direction, so...
Of course, we've got unused kindergarten classrooms at Lincoln.
We do indeed.
Shall we move on? Questions? Okay. So, don't ask me to give the acronym, or name it all, but number four basically is, we have had it presented to the board, that we have lost the funding for our NJROTC program. We have applied for, I don't remember what the NN, Navy...
The Cadet Corps.
Yeah, the Cadet Corps, thank you. We have not, you know, they have acknowledged that they've received our application, but they have not yet approved it, so we're still... So, we're still a little bit in limbo with whether or not that will get approved if, for example, and there's no funding associated with it even if it does get approved. So, we did want to indicate what that program costs.
So, we were told that the enrollment right now in that program is seventy-two or seventy.
It's in the seventies, correct.
It'd be interesting to know how many of those are IDAs.
How many of those are?
Inner district agreements.
Well, I asked a question about this before, and if you were to eliminate that program, which is an elective, would you not have to have another elective costing roughly the same amount of money, just a different elective? And the answer that I got at the time was, because the class isn't full to capacity, there is a savings, but not the total savings of one person's salary, one FTE. It's the difference, it's not the forty-three thousand that one FTE would represent in this particular case. It's the difference between how we could fill a different class with a different elective. Is that not correct?
And the answer to that is, is what I'm, let me make sure I'm hearing what you're, or understanding what I'm hearing, is most of those classes or the courses or the particular periods don't run the maximum contractual size. They don't go up to thirty-three kids. They may be seventeen kids or twelve kids. So, if that was, those course offerings were gone, how many sections would we need for those kids to go into? Is that part of it? Is that the answer to that? And I would say, it depends because we currently have electives with room. So, whether or not we could, we could fold in all those students without any additional FTE or not, we have not yet calculated. At, yeah.
How many, how many periods does this program run? It's not a, it runs.
It runs five periods.
Five periods of full-time.
Yes.
So, would an option rather than to eliminate it, if you can't fill up the classes, and that would be that, if this class was full to capacity at every period, this one FTE would be no different than a different elective for those students, correct?
Actually, it would be a more reasonable fiscal option.
Because other electives aren't full. So, if that was not the case, would it be possible to reduce the number of periods?
Yes, yeah, I mean, absolutely.
That it's offered and say, well, if you can fill it up for four periods a day, we'll run it four periods a day.
And the answer to that is yes. What we, again, what we wanted to bring to the board were if it were gone. And then, as the conversations, you know, continue or progress, it's okay, well, we don't necessarily want to eliminate this particular program, but let's see what it would look like if it's only a period or two periods or half of what it was. So, this for us was to give you the best idea of the relief that it would give us on the, on general funds.
And I'll just add very quickly that the contribution to this program is actually fifty-two thousand as opposed to what's attached specifically to the FTE. And it brings in revenue right now of about twenty-six thousand, and as I understand, that revenue would go away next year.
It is gone. We've already received that notification.
So, it's dead of forty-three thousand, it's fifty-two.
That's the contribution right now. And again, on top of that, we're receiving revenues of twenty-six thousand this year that we wouldn't receive next year.
My understanding of listening to where the difference would be just the FTE for the teacher because with the program changing from NJROTC, they had all the supplies and they were going to provide the materials.
They'll provide.
So, there don't be an outlay above and beyond the teachers.
Well, there, yes, there would. They are going to provide the curriculum, but they won't provide the uniforms. They will, they will not provide the money to go on the trips that they take, you know, when they visit academies or they visit different bases or the, those, you know, when they've been like to the San Diego Naval Base, those funds won't, will also go away. And those are not calculated in this.
And a great deal. They're going to be similar to FFA and their Booster Club supports their travel.
They currently don't have one, but yeah.
What we got out of the last meeting with, when Darren was speaking, I, my understanding was is that it would be, other than the teacher, that the cost would be covered with this other program and that they were going to reuse the uniforms, that they were going to, or charge the students for, I forgot what he said, I'm sorry, but.
That's what I remember him saying.
I remember that he addressed that issue, that there were not going to be additional funds as there were, or need for additional funds as there were when the program was NJROTC.
And I would say that, yes, but they won't be able to do some of the things they could as NJROTC. Yeah, and.
The other piece of the.
But they're still eligible for those other.
May not be as good, but it would still exist.
Correct.
The other piece of that pie was the possibilities of going with HROP.
Right.
And has that been considered? And how many sections? And we would lose sections and gain sections.
Right, right. And we actually met with our HROP yesterday, Rick Jordan and Jan Morehouse and John Sapper. We're still in the development stage of coming up with a proposal because right now, we have, I think, twenty-three sections or twenty-four sections of ROP classes. And how we utilize those ROP classes, we have some say in. So, if we were to shift two periods of ROP to support this particular program, then we would have to look at what two periods, then would we not, that we're operating, not operate? You know, we are trying to push pretty hard, Rick Jordan and I, on seeing if they would give us additional sections.
Always.
Of course. And the doors opened a little bit, but it hasn't necessarily been a commitment. So, yes, it's a possibility, but then we would have to say, what won't we do then to do this?
By they, you mean the Humboldt County Office of Ed?
Humboldt County Office of Ed through the Humboldt Regional Occupation Programs.
What are some examples of the other ROP classes?
Oh, boy, they vary.
Just.
Well, the only one that comes to mind is the robotics course. And I know that's not the best example.
The auto shop.
The auto shop is one. We've done welding, we've done.
The wood class.
The wood class, wood shop. We've done some accounting, I think, or computer, yeah. Athletic training, there's a section there, so.
An admin physiologist here.
The culinary.
Not yet. In previous years, but not currently, what we're currently able to do. Work experience, that kind of stuff.
Well, keep the accounting class.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, number five, those Eureka Adult School?
As with the conversation about child development, Adult School encompasses lots of different programs and Sondy could speak to those more specifically, but within that, again, some will make money, some will be break even, some will not. Obviously, there's value that isn't necessarily calculated in dollars and cents as you look at those programs as well. All that being said, as we synthesized it and looked at what would the bottom line impact be if this program weren't here, we assess that to be roughly four hundred thousand dollars.
There it goes.
We're done. So, again, the question is, if we were to go to adult ed and said, look, we need to cut X amount from your budget, is it doable? Is it all or nothing?
No, it is absolutely not an all or nothing.
Miss. Absolutely.
No, it's really not an all or nothing issue. We have, we have several programs that encroach greatly, but we have also several other programs that are revenue positive. Is that, I don't know what the right word is, but that are very much in the black and that can help cover some of our classified staff to, you know, to make it all happen. But there is absolutely a lot of room to work with either less general fund dollars. It can be done with zero general fund dollars, although, you know, there are some risks there, which we can go into in further detail later. But, yeah, we can definitely run a program on our grant funds and on our income-producing funds. Right now, the jail is still ADA-funded, it's not in, within flexibility. So, we get a good chunk of ADA from the jail and we also, the sheriff's department is paying a good chunk of that, and so that runs in the black. Our CNA program runs in the black because it is supported by Bria's Healthcare. And, let's see, what else runs in the black? We also have our WIA grant, Workforce Investment Act money that pays for ESL, Adult Basic Education, Adult Secondary Education, Citizenship. That is all benchmark-driven. So, when I said earlier, there are risks to cutting back. When we cut back, of course, you're not serving as many students for as many hours, so you get fewer benchmarks, so your WIA money goes down. So, that's a, that's a concern. Let's see, oh, we have one other grant right now that is our CalWorks money. That's about, close to fifty thousand. I think it was forty-two last year. I think we're expecting forty-eight next year. And that money is specifically for career technical education dollars, and we're spending that right now in partnership with Employment Training Division to provide workforce skills certification. We're also using it for our computer business training programs. So, those are revenue-neutral. Our biggest, the biggest bite comes from Adult Basic Education and Adult Secondary Education right now. That is our biggest bite into the general fund money.
Are those the two programs that you're required to run if you have an adult ed program?
Yeah, and we wouldn't have.
Do you have a GED and a, and a high school diploma program?
Yeah, and that wouldn't have to completely go away. We do have some Workforce Investment Act money that pays for some of that, and so, no, we wouldn't want to close that completely down because if you, once you pull out of those programs, you lose that Workforce Investment Act money and you cannot reapply until it opens for reapplication. And it's, I don't see that happening anytime soon. The other question regarding that, I talked to our CDE rep today about the jail and if we were to move the program, say if we were to pull out, who would take, take the jail on? And the possibility would be Humboldt County Office of Education could take it on. They would, of course, then get the ADA and all of that, but they could not gain the Workforce Investment Act money. That would be a loss. That's something you can't get back once you let go of. So. Oh, oh, and one other thing, concurrence, that is one hundred percent funded with general fund. There are no adult ed grants that can cover concurrent students. So, that is.
The ones that are in the high school.
Those, that's for credit recovery, high school students who are trying to graduate on time to help them, you know, so that helps our overall graduation rate. And that is one hundred percent funded out of general fund.
But these students could also be served by Zo Barnum's Credit Recovery Program?
But we have, we have Zo Barnum students in our Credit Recovery Program as well.
But you get ADA dollars because they're at Zo Barnum, not because they're at the adult ed.
No, we get zero ADA dollars for concurrent students, zero.
You don't get the ADA from them being at Zo Barnum?
Yeah, they get it at Zo.
We do.
But then, when they come to us, because they're not making enough progress fast enough, they can come to us in the afternoon and kind of speed the process up. So, the benefit is absolutely not in ADA. The benefit is purely in grad rate.
Then our Zo Barnum graduation rate goes up.
Correct. And.
One of the issues that's keeping our district as a whole in program improvement is the graduation rate. Right?
That is not a question for me.
Yes.
Yes.
So, back to this, trying to make sense of this again, because the numbers are all different. So, the three hundred and ninety-eight thousand here is what, is that represent what the general fund is putting out for adult education?
Yes, but let me explain the yes. So, right now, as part of our revenue limit formula, roughly two-point-four million of our overall twenty million is attributable to adult education. And that, that's based on what adult education looked like when flexibility came on in two thousand eight oh nine. So, that's the sliver, if you will, of revenue limit that would be attributable to adult education. The majority of that comes into our general fund. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that two-point-four goes into the Adult Education Fund. So, that's, that's the revenue contribution that we make. So, that, you would say off the bat, well, that, the hit there should be seven fifty, but out of that seven fifty that we place in adult education, a portion of it we use to pay roughly eighty percent of our technology support services. And then, another hundred thousand or so is, that we bill to them for use of premises and the like. And then, there's also an indirect that comes back. So, when you, all the back and forth of all that means at the end of the day, the true hit to the general fund is that three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
So, this fund balance that we've talked about earlier, that's not cash, but this two-point-five million dollars that says it's in a balance, in a fund for adult education, that's how much revenue we would expect to get? That's how much we would expect to bring in for adult education? You said two-point-four?
The numbers just happen to fairly closely line up. So, two-point-four is, again, roughly the amount that is sliced off of revenue limit and then is put in the fund for adult education. In addition to that, when flexibility was first implemented in two thousand oh seven oh eight, we were able to sweep some of the ending fund balances that had been in that separate fund for adult education, bring them into the, to the general fund. So, for the most part, that's what those monies are, or monies that were swept in at that time. So, they're sitting in a separate resource, but they're not necessarily funding the operation of adult education at this point.
Are we using them for anything at this point?
They are sitting there and they're, they're, in essence, another savings account for us at this point. Unfortunately, not a fully funded savings account because we can't specifically say that's the cash that's attributable to that two-point-five million. Back to that same conversation, unfortunately, that we were having before.
Okay, and then, so then, on here where it shows the expenditures for adult education, it was a million, one-point-five million, but we bring in two-point-four, so it seems like there should be.
Well, so.
A million over instead of under.
Contribution is a bit of a misnomer now. It used to be that all the money would come into the general fund and then we would make a transfer out of the general fund into the adult ed fund. But for an accounting reason now, rather than bringing it in and making that transfer, we actually slice off a piece before it hits the general fund and put it in the adult ed fund. The reason for that is that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we placed there that way, if we so chose, we could bring the rest of that seven fifty into the general fund. If we were to bring it into the general fund and then transfer out to adult ed, we couldn't then bring it back into the, into the general fund if we wanted to. So, it's, it's just a, kind of the way that it is treating, treated from an accounting standpoint.
Right, well, we actually use it. When we had the flexibility to bring adult ed into K-12 general funds, we chose to do that as a district to help our overall picture. So, it's been supporting K-12 for, ever since the flexibility came on, on board.
And so, the rest of the answer there then, Susan, is the revenues that you see for adult education are not necessarily or specifically the revenue limit portion, but they're the revenues that adult education either generates through its activities or the different grants and revenue flows that it receives by virtue of the programs that it runs.
But you, but you did also say that this money is sitting there in a savings account. It's like a savings that we're.
Back in the general fund. That's right. It's, so it's a resource within the general fund that has its own ending fund balance, which again, all those different resource ending fund balances comprise our overall general fund ending balance.
Are we ready for number six? Reduced district support of secondary sports programs. Zane, twenty-three, Eureka High, a hundred and eight, and what's that?
That basically is. That basically is, is how much general fund support do we give currently to support athletic programs at Zane and Eureka High School?
Is that reduce or eliminate?
I mean, from my perspective, everything, this is if it were eliminated.
Okay, so this isn't reduce, this is eliminate, district support?
Correct.
I just, it's just a word.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So, you're talking about eliminating football, basketball?
Eliminating our contribution, because many of those programs bring in quite a bit of their own money. For instance, football is actually bringing in more than they're spending, right?
No.
No.
Not even? So, football's self-supporting?
Well, football is not just supported through the district's funds, but it's also supported through Boosters Club and whatever other external-
So we're not pulling any general fund money out to support our football program? But there are other sports programs that we are spending money on?
And I would say, not 100%, I, um, we just paid for half their uniforms.
It's complicated, I mean, we pay for the, the coach, the amount of money that we take in the gate.
You're out.
So this is a complicated one, because we have general fund that pays for coaches, for example, whether it be in football or basketball, general fund money that we use to support travel, but then we also generate money at the gate for, for various athletic events, and the amount that we generated in football, for example, at the gate covered about 90% of the, 95% of the major travel that we had, because we had, if you remember, we, the, the big five was reconfigured for football, and we only played four in-league games, and we had to then travel an extra, um, an extra time this season, and we traveled to Sacramento. A trip like that is about $6,000, just for the, the cost of the bus, and, so, three of those major travels was about $18,000, a little bit more actually, probably a little bit closer to 19,500, and we got about, we took in about 18,000 at the gate for all of our home games. So, that's almost a wash, but as LeAnn was saying, the district supports, um, specifically for football, equipment refurbishment that happens each year by law for both helmets and shoulder pads, paying a portion of, of the uniforms, and, and then again, coaches, and so this doesn't take into account what we pay for referees for, for games in, in all of the sports. The gate, at times, depending on the sport, covers the costs of the, of the refs, but if we were to walk across the street tonight, we've got three games, two refs for the first two games, sometimes a three-ref team for the varsity game, so it's, it's expensive. So, between the general fund, uh, that pays into the, the sports programs in a full range of ways, from the, the cost of cleaning the floor, you know, at the, at a basketball game, we've got a janitor around that does that, and is in the building, maintaining the, the building, um, full range of things in the general fund, then we have gate receipt that supports the program. We sell ASB cards to students that they pay X number of dollars for, $25 for at the start of the year, and that gets them into the games for free, and re, but also get reduced entrance into other events, and so half of a, an ASB card goes into athletics. Then we do have outside sources, the boosters generate a great deal of, of money, giving a enormous amount of work, mainly in the, in the concession stands and the boosters dinner, those two, those two things is the, the majority of their income. And then at the, at the site level, we use SBCP money to support travel, for example, and, and uniform, and the cost of security, and we have to put up portable toilets for a few months during the, the year when we're using the stadium. So, athletics dips into, uh, a number of different places, both general fund, site funds, money that is, is generated at the site and then comes to the ASB, and then as well as outside sources. So, it's a, it's a complicated funding mechanism, but something that could be, with a little bit of time, laid out, I think, fairly clearly.
Plus, if, if we ever did anything like eliminate all sports, we would lose dozens of students to other high schools and middle schools, so the savings there is just kind of illusionary.
Right, and we, we've already reduced the, the amount of money that we spend on travel each year. We only, as a district, support travel to certain schools, um, outside of the area, and that has had a, a real savings for us, and, and we don't charge students any kind of participation fee. There was the significant court settlement that came out last year, that was very clear in its language about charging kids participation fees, although some skills, some schools still do that. I'm not sure exactly how they're, they're getting around those. And then, when we start to look at eliminating one team in a series of, of teams, a JV or a freshman team, then we start to lose the number of kids, potentially that come to us from the beginning, as well as kids that are coming up through the, through the program, and boosters has played a significant role in maintaining some of those coaching positions so that we can run JV programs in some of the, in some of the sports.
Just a couple, or one thing I'd point out there is, and I, I don't mean to be arguing against athletics, but the, the numbers that we see up here, I think are probably pretty conservative in terms of what the actual cost is to the district. For one, we're only as good as, as the information that we can pull out of the system, and that means is it coded correctly, and I, I know just having done some research, that we see some expenditures that didn't fall under athletics that, that should have, so that would increase that number for one.
Like buffing the floor might be a maintenance thing, but it's actually-
And that's another angle, there, there's some of those costs that are really impossible, I think, to, to section out and to allocate specifically to sports. So between those two aspects, I, I think that we would call those both conservative numbers up there. How much more above that would be, at this point, I couldn't give you an answer.
So I sent you an email and asked for specific figures, do we have those, or is that going to take some time? My question was, to please identify all the sports programs currently running at Zane and Eureka High School, and how many students participate in these programs?
Um, I can give you some of the breakdown. Zane, for instance, has 14 teams that, um, that have participation by, by about 182 students at Eureka High, unfortunately, I think I miscounted, I, I think it's along the lines of, I'm not going to guess at the number of teams, but there's also four, uh, four cheerleading units that go along with it, and the number of participants is somewhere in the 520 range. I have the, the list of, um-
Estimates.
The teams here, but I'm not going to count them up, I forgot to add them up before I came in, so, but I can get that number back to you, Wendy.
So, we spend about $131,000 a year to provide 740 students with athletic-type-
Opportunities.
Opportunities.
That's about right.
Thank you.
If we lost 20 students, it'd be 110,000.
You are better at math than I am.
Some of those students play three sports, so that number might not reflect a person?
I was looking for, somewhere in the ballpark.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Okay, transportation, uh, this number, the $142,000 of approximate general fund savings, let me try to break that down and go through. At this point, we're, um, we're running roughly a $250,000, uh, we're providing about, uh, here's the number, $235,000 contribution. So the 235,000 contribution on top of the revenue that we would have expected to receive puts us at about 610,000 of overall revenue. The $375,000 revenue is a reduced amount in terms of what the original apportionment was for transportation. So when, when the, the state froze the funding model, it said, here's your number, we're going to cut you by 20%, and that's the amount that we're going to give you going forward. So that number is roughly $468,000 is what the original appropriation is. And one of the problems is, if we spend less than that, they continue to cut our appropriation. Now that sounds a little bit ironic, in that the number anticipated for next year is zero, and you can't cut any lower than that, but what we're hearing is that if you do, if you were to eliminate transportation below, and, and completely go below what that original appropriation amount is, if things ever get cranked back up again, you basically would have lowered your, your reimbursement bar or your revenue bar, and you would never see those revenues come back. So that's one of the risks of, of completely elimination, eliminating a transportation program. So as we've talked to the county office about that, their recommendation is to look at funding at the original appropriation level, which is $468,000, less the, the, the intended revenue plus the contribution, that's where we come up with $142,000 net savings to general fund. And again, you can look at that differently, you can say next year, well, your number is zero, so any, and each cent that you pay above that is in fact not a savings to the general fund, but a hit to the general fund. We tried to pick a point in time and stick with it.
We could spend probably a week just talking about this, but if, uh, we could ask Dan to come back with what $142,000 reduction would look like.
Right, that's what we've asked him to do.
I could do that.
Have you already been working on that?
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, I asked him last week. What would it look like to operate within what we hope to get?
It won't look pretty.
It won't look pretty.
Okay, so, um, I have brought some of those numbers, um, basically, and I'm using the real numbers, Paul's using the budgeted numbers that, you know, that we're being told to use, the 468,000, which was what we used to get, and in reality, for example, as Paul said, this year we expect to get 375,000 in state aid. We'll have a, um, other local revenue contribution of 14,000, and a district contribution of 255,000. So the entire program will cost, or is budgeted to cost $644,000 this year. Just to kind of tell you how we fit in the scheme of things, currently, the state average is, the state is paying about 40% of what it really costs to run a program, so 40 cents for every dollar. We're at 58.5% of the state is paying, 58.5%, and that's because we've been very frugal. So our district contribution is 41.5%, but in most cases, in most school districts, it's We're hoping that, even though the funding is seen zero, we think the governor will get the message, just like he did with the trigger cuts, and that'll change. The problem with that is, even though they says, okay, well, we're not going to take it out of transportation, we're going to take it out in general revenue, so you still have a loss. May not be as great a loss, but there's still a loss of income to the program. So just as, in general, currently, we're running six home-to-school routes and three special ed routes. When I first started in the district in 95, we had nine home-to-school routes and three special ed routes. So we've eliminated three home-to-school routes since I've been here. Each route, right now, is running us around $71,600. So if you want to know what it costs per route, if you took all the routes and divided the 644,000 by the, the 10 routes, or the nine routes, you'll come up with the $71,600. If we went to special ed routing only, and that's all we did was just special ed, it would cost the district $214,679. And, you know, the problem with that is, there's a $429,000 savings over the current budget, but as Paul mentioned, it re-benches our money, so even though next year they say there's going to be $0, if they ever did put those dollars back, the maximum we'd ever qualify for would be $214,000 from, from now on. If we ran, if we reduced busing to where we said, and I'm not saying that we'll say this, but I'm just letting you know some of the numbers, if we did just our special ed and the outlying areas, those areas outside of city limits, for example, freshwater, Cotton, Elk River, Humboldt Hill, Phil's Landing and those places, it would take us three special ed buses and three home-to-school buses, and it'd be a total of $429,359. So, that's a savings of $214,000 over the current budget.
And where would that compare to that benchmark?
Um, our current, our current state of, state apportionment that we're actually receiving currently is 375.
But, you can't reduce beyond-
You have to spend at least 95% of the state apportionment, which is 468,000. So if we spent 425, we're pretty close to that 95%.
That's the question.
Okay. And the other thing that has been kicked around, and some districts are actually, you know, I, I read all the time how districts are dealing with these cuts, and some of the districts are now going to, they provide AM transportation only, they get the kids to school. That way they get the ADA.
Yep.
And then-
Wow.
Parents are responsible for getting them home. Obviously, you can, you know, just, as you just heard right there, you could hear, one of the issues is, parents don't come get them. So, somebody has to watch the kids while they're at school, and, you know, sometimes it can be, even with our transportation system we have, I'm sure the principals can all tell you, sometimes it can be hours before the parents remember, there's a child that I need to go pick up, so. So, but if we did that, interestingly enough, if we ran the same routes we're currently running and just did AM transportation, by law, we would still have to do the special ed AM and PM. But, um, if we ran AM only on the other six routes, the cost would be the same as if we had no in-town routes, which is basically $429,359. Again, there's always that danger of not meeting our benchmark, so that we would get rebinged if transportation dollars ever do flow again. My gut feeling is, transportation funds will be there next year, but I think we'll have a cut, and I think it'll be a revenue limit cut, not a transportation cut. So, I may be wrong. There are other possible things that we could do that would create savings, but none of those would make savings great enough to really get rid of the general fund deficit. The deficit that we run is pretty common in the state. You know, we would be, if we were ever, where we were at 100% funding, that the state was funding at 100%, I'm sure we'd be getting lots of calls from every school district in the state, wanting to know how we did it. Nobody else can do that either.
I think we had this issue a couple years ago, and we, we did cut some money for transportation out of the budget, against John's better judgment. Um, the concern was, is that if you don't bus them, they're not going to come, and if you are missing a kid, then your revenue, your, your income goes down, so I was curious, is there any way of tracking what that originally did to us when we did cut those routes?
Um, yeah, actually there is, we have what they call a J-141 report, where we have to report how many students we transport each month on each bus, and I did look through those numbers. We averaged, um, over 2008, 2009, we averaged 671 students for the year, per day. Last year, 2010, 2011, we were down to 590 students per day, so I don't- So I don't, I'm not saying that those kids went away, but they weren't on buses.
And is there a number that represents the absenteeism rate, the increase in absenteeism of those children?
I don't have that number.
Is there a way of...
Our percentage attendance?
Did it go down after we made that change? We'd have to go back and get that information. I don't have it tonight.
Well, that's the concern. If you're weighing the pros and cons of any, any cut, what's it going to cost? The hidden costs you don't see. So we've done it. We cut busing. We're serving X amount less students. Is there, do we have, in our data-driven world, a way of finding out what it did to us last time?
Did that translate into a reduction in income?
Well, above and beyond, I would say, our declining enrollment, because that's been a pretty consistent factor.
That's why I said percentage.
Well, it wouldn't be enrollment, it would be absentee. It wouldn't be a kid absent all the time, because it would be an increase in the number of days a bus student wound up absent versus, you see what I'm saying?
I do. I think there's two things.
Our ADA has been fairly consistent between 93 and 93.5%. So at least as I think back over the, you know, the years that I've looked back at that issue, there isn't a marked change there. It doesn't mean that people didn't stop coming because they couldn't get on the buses and perhaps go elsewhere or whatever, but in terms of just pure attendance, ratio of attendance to enrollment, it's been very, very consistent through that period of time.
Within 1%.
Yeah, even, yeah, within a half percent, probably.
Thank you.
Food services.
Talk about another complicated one.
Yeah, here again, see child development and adult ed in terms of the type of programs that intersect and funded in different ways and probably run red and black. What I tried to do here is just kind of on an aggregated basis, show revenue, adjusted expenditures, and then at this point, the net hit to the general fund. And I say adjusted expenditures, our actual encroachment is probably more of 325, $325,000 or so this year, but there were two one-time events that we're aware of. One is having to bring in, or put the particulate filters on the food services. I can say particulate filters. Don't quite know what they are. That's one aspect. And then the other one is, we generally run about a $300,000 ending fund balance, because food services is its own fund, and a fund, per se, can't run in the red. You can't have a negative fund balance. So to keep a positive cash balance requires about a $300,000 fund balance to equate to that positive cash number, so.
And kind of again, I spoke with Arlene last week and said, okay, what would it look like if we didn't run in the red? And I don't know if you've had time.
Hi.
I gave him all these problems, and she has no voice, by the way.
Oh, he's not really stepped up to...
Of course, they're our employees.
Right. So my name's Arlene Lozio, with no voice.
So it's all...
So it's real close to the mic.
So stand real close.
Okay. So some of the things that we can entertain for cuts are universal breakfast. We're currently feeding the entire district. That's one of the options we could look at. We could use a closed campus.
You're a good high school.
We currently are feeding only 26% of the 47% that are eligible. That's something that we've held out before. When I was at Eureka High, hoping that we could keep the kids on campus, I can cut back possibly on, we offer Domino's pizza, just to keep the kids on campus and not have them wander. We currently are spending about $68,000 on pizza, but that's something we could offer maybe Tuesday or Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday. We risk the kids leaving campus, getting injured, not coming back. You know, the food, the food options are already pretty slim. Food costs are going to go up because of the new food requirements. The good news is, we are going to get an additional six cents per meal. Should be, realize that in the spring. I don't know if Paul knew that. So there are some additional options to look at there. What else did I have? Salad bars are an issue, possibly, or a way we can cut back. But with the new food and dietary guidelines that are coming up next year, we currently have the option to choose between like, about one, one menu planning approach of about six. We currently use shape, and we use shape because it's a, the healthy model that we've chosen to, that benefits our nutritional program and our wellness policy. But it also lets the kids not choose. They can only need to take two items. So next year, everybody's going to food-based. That's what the state of California's going to. And so they will be doing an offer versus serve, so I think that they will be taking more food, but we, now we have salad bars, they can take unlimited. So possibly with a different planning approach for our menus, there'll be some savings there. I can work up something further if you have any...
I know that we also take care of Glen Paul's contract through the county office of education, and I don't know if there's others. Are those, do those run in the black, or are they in the red?
I, I have that here. I think they're running, I think they're running in the black. Just, maybe just about even.
I was thinking if we could just double the cost to them, then we'll pick up some money.
How about triple? I'm good with that.
Well, whatever they're charging us for special ed, we'll charge them for food.
There you go.
A chargeback.
I like that approach.
It's a creative approach.
Problem solved.
I think there's definite room to maneuver within those programs. We currently feed Glen Paul and Pacific View Charter, Blue Ox, ERC, and Winsler, I believe what else? Adult Ed and Santi's programs. And we could all just sit down and take a look at what we actually need to do. We could take a closer look at the breakfast option and see if that's a possibility.
So to offer Domino's pizza five days a week, costs a district $68,000 a year?
Yes.
Over and above what we charge the students for that, for the pizza?
We offer it to all of our students, so free, reduced, eligible kids as well. The slice of pizza costs is $1.39 or $1.31, I can't remember right off the top of my head. And, you know, that's covered by the reimbursement rate.
Questions? We might have more when you could talk.
I'd be happy to talk to you also.
Just to put a little bit of historical perspective on in talking to Rick Hanger about, knows a lot about food services and the like, and been involved for quite some time. So historically, at one point, it looks like the district was able to reduce its encroachment down to about $100,000. And again, right now, we're running roughly 250 if you take out some of the one-time events. So through, for various reasons, that number has crept back up over time.
Food costs for an additional $50,000.
Sure, sure.
Just until today, right now, this year, so I expect that to be about $60,000 increase in food costs.
Fuel costs are probably in there as well. I mean, there's lots of different factors.
Right. Well, even just, I think, Arlene's made a very conscientious, looking at conscientiously of providing quality food to our kids, too. And that costs as well.
Right. We're making...
All the right reasons, but it does cost.
We're making all the improvements and more offerings, which is actually, we started at the high school this year, and just this week, is to offer some, we're trying to keep their interest and keep them coming back. Offering some additional choices of sandwiches and some item, other items.
Aren't you talking about creating a garden?
Yes, I am.
A community garden?
Yes.
There at the site, too?
Yes. Not at the site, at a site, a community garden at a site.
At a site.
Right.
The corp yard's got a limited amount of cultivatable land.
I'm not sure I'd want to grow vegetables there.
Well, our maintenance department is growing a nice little fine batch of tomatoes out there.
Yeah, they do. They're nice, too.
Yes, they do.
Okay, so number nine, reduce energy utility costs?
Well, as you can see by that nice round number there, it's not a very scientific number. But as we talked about it, we felt through a number of different measures, just being more cost-conscious, energy audits, potentially working with, I think, a group we've mentioned before, Energy Education out of Texas, which comes in and helps you be smarter about the ways that you're going about using things, just basic things, like we wouldn't have our lights on right now, those type of things. We think we could probably come up with roughly $50,000 worth of reduction. We're budgeted for what it's worth for our utilities this year, somewhere in the $700,000 range, so that would be obviously less than a 10% cut to get to that $50,000 savings.
So I guess the next one is, it's not necessarily an elimination, but it's a reduction. It's what, trying to clarify that. And that's just looking at some expenses that we typically have and start making some, just a percentage cut. And in this cost, you know, we looked at the general fund travel and conference expense. And it's, just for tonight's purposes, we just took a 10% cut, and what would that Any questions about that one?
Does this include things like the professional development, you go to a, not conference, but training, anything that has to do with...
And it depends. I mean, certainly, part of what you'll see, I think, it's on the categorical funds list. I can't, I can't see from that. There, sometimes travel conferences, those kinds of expenses come from categorical funds, and sometimes they come from general funds. And so this was just the general fund recommendation? It doesn't represent the categorical support for those kinds of activities.
Just to clarify, most of the costs for travel incurred for professional development, staff development, training, would occur through Title I. And we, there are mandates that we set aside, a very large amount of Title I money for staff development and training. And so we do engage in a lot of travel related to that.
And quickly, just the areas that this encompasses are in mileage, meals, registration fees, and travel and conferences, so, again, excluding the categorical funded items.
Is it accurate that we are reimbursing mileage at the federal rate?
Yes.
Yes.
What?
Fifty-five and a half cents.
Okay. And aren't textbooks bought with restricted funds? I mean, or, this is general fund money?
It got swept.
Swept.
Yes.
Yeah, the funds, the instructional materials fund, IMF, that was one of the categoricals that was allowed to be swept, along with everything else. And our school district, a couple of years ago, three years ago, made the very deliberate decision, even though we could have used those swept funds for other purposes, we, we deliberately decided to, that we needed to improve our English Language Arts and Mathematics courses, beginning with kindergarten level, going up into the high school as far as we could reach 10th grade and 11th grade in some cases, to upgrade our instructional materials in those areas. So we've spent quite a lot of money in the past couple of years on those textbooks and materials. And what you see on the spreadsheet here would represent the difference between what we spent in the current year, $165,000, and $45,000, which we're projecting would be the absolute minimum that we really need to replenish lost books, to, to make sure that we get a couple of more courses at the high school outfitted with appropriate instructional materials. And for mathematics, at kindergarten, first and second grade, every year, we have to replace the consumable materials for the core program in mathematics at K1 and 2. So that's what the $45,000 is. So it then therefore translates to a difference or a savings of $120,000.
I might be going backwards a little bit here, but explain to me, when you're talking about money that was swept, it was swept for that particular year. And each year, money comes into restricted funds, categorical funds, every year. And each year, we would have to make a decision to sweep that money into the general fund? So just because this was swept in the '09-'10 school year, we received an additional amount into a restricted fund the following year, and will again receive, no?
So I don't remember what the resource used to be for textbooks, but anyway, it was a restricted resource at the time. So now, we talked about, I call it the categorical block grant, which isn't completely true, but, but we do get a large chunk of money that is unrestricted now, and it's earmarked, if you will, for the different resources, textbooks being one of that resource 0212. Resource 0212 is an unrestricted resource, however. So although it says textbooks, that money technically could be spent on anything that we wanted to.
And we get it every year?
At this point, we get it every year, because it's been, yeah, it's been frozen, if you will, based on that, that original level, which then was reduced by 19 or 20%. And that's one of the concerns that we have as we look forward, that some of these funds that have been coming to us irrespective are now going to potentially next year go into that weighted pupil formula, and would be more ADA-driven, as opposed to being that, that number that's frozen in time.
Okay.
And we think it's somewhere between possible to likely that we would get less under the weighted pupil formula than we're receiving for it right now.
So that's kind of where my confusion was, because this number that I'm looking at doesn't actually represent what we received in revenue for earmarked for textbooks, but rather what we actually spent in that particular year, last year.
That's right.
So the savings of $120,000 is based on what we spent, not what we, we actually brought in.
That's correct. And I unfortunately don't have the number of what, what would be quote-unquote allocated to that particular resource out of the entire grant.
And since we've already adopted a whole bunch of new textbooks, and we wouldn't expect to actually have to spend any more money on textbooks, well, other than the reusable, the...
Consumables and stuff, yeah.
Consumables, thank you, reusable. This isn't actually a decision that we would be making, this is just actually the facts of our budget now that we're not having to adopt new textbooks in the next coming years.
If I could just try to make it a little clearer for the purpose of this spreadsheet and the purpose of our discussion tonight, we're trying to find savings in a budget. We're trying to reduce the structural deficit. So if the accounting department said, Rich, here you go, here's your 165K budget again for next year, I would say, oh, boy, that's wonderful. I would go to the principals and I'd say, what do you need? However, that's not the mode of operation. We are looking at, we're cutting back, and we're restricting expenditures only to what we absolutely have to have. And so that's one way that we can show we're, are reducing that structural deficit right here in this particular area by $120,000.
I guess a better way to ask is, we have to project three years out, this year, next year, and the following year. So does our budget reflect that we are expecting to spend $165,000 this year, next year, and the following year? Thereby actually reducing our projected budget for the next two years by this $120,000? Were we actually, were we feeding in that number, $165,000?
I know that's what the number is for this year. I can't tell you for sure that it is for the next two years, but I suspect that it probably is. I just don't have that in front of me right now. Sorry, Wendy.
And that, that three-year budget?
Uh-huh.
It's likely that that carried through.
Correct, generally, yeah.
So with going to $45,000 minimum, I mean, that's possible for a limited amount of time.
Right.
Is it, is it something we could do, get away by with, for three years?
For three years, it'd be probably doable. Even though, just talking with the principals this morning, I learned that, for example, teachers who teach Spanish, they're working, Spanish is a foreign language, they're working with textbooks that are 11 years old or worse. And yet, the question is, well, can we get by with those same textbooks? Yes, we can get by with those same textbooks. We couldn't answer the question the same way for some of the other courses, some of the advanced-level courses at Eureka High, for example. We are thinking about a couple of courses, but the expenditures will be small, so I would say a couple of years, three years, we could probably get by with a smaller amount like this, between $45,000 and $60,000. We do need to replenish our interventions materials, so I might want to bump the figure up a little bit, but basically, the answer would be yes, John.
I know that the cost of textbooks has just soared, you know, it's a huge number per book now. Is there any talk, is there any future in the electronic form of readers?
Yeah, it's quite popular. There are some schools and districts across the country that are using open-source textbook materials, usually students at high school, college age. There's also CK-12 online, where it is locally created, locally authored, you might say open-source material, textbooks that we might be able to use. The question we always have to struggle with, are these appropriate for our students? Are these materials appropriate for the standards that we have to teach to here in the state of California? So there, that's an area to explore, in the future, to lower our costs, yes. And I think the industry is going in that direction, anyway. I think in a couple of years, three years, we're going to see a lot of things available that are not print.
And I would say even right now, our ninth and 10th grade language arts materials have an online textbook that you can access from at home, and I know that because my granddaughter did, she didn't have to bring her textbook home. But again, some of our concern is, are all students able to access online materials? But we are, like Rich said, we are exploring that, and it was great for her to not have to bring another book home.
We're talking about a budget number and looking out three years.
Correct.
And I just was wondering if we're considering that, and hopefully, using your granddaughter's example.
I really liked it. Had a voice, text-to-voice feature too, which was really nice.
There's one other component to this as well, and I'm just going to use it again as an example, and it's just kind of the mantra, which is, try to spend money, your most restricted funds first. And it may be, as we look at, whether it's this area or anywhere else, that there may be a way to spend some of our other restricted funds. I'm going to start wandering far afield of what I really know too much about, but, for instance, whether it be Title I or our restricted lottery funds right now, which are for instructional materials, it may be that if we see balances there, that we're having a more difficult time spending, that we could shift from spending these less restricted funds and spend them over here, and therefore, open up some of those monies to pay for other general fund items, teachers and the like, those type of things. So, there's an issue of supplanting that we need to be careful about in there, but in general, that's something that we continue to look about, or to continue to look at, and I think it's a strategy that we'll employ as we go forward as well.
So number 12, materials and supplies, same ideas.
Yes.
Number 13, elementary, certificated.
And, do you want me to do this? Okay, and again, this is, this is looking at, as we've done for the last 10 years, with continuing declining enrollment, even though we are, like I said, pretty excited with kindergarten and first grade enrollment, we are continuing to decline overall. So both for elementary and for secondary, we have factored in for the, gosh, last 10 years that I can think of, a reduction in need for staff as a result of that. In addition, really looking at maximizing all the class sizes, and really looking at making sure our, and I would say, for the most part, they're pretty full, but they could be fuller in particular grades and particular courses. And really looking at, you know, making sure that we are utilizing the class size maximums as maximum, as best we can. We still have some courses in some areas that are running below. And not necessarily just like the AP courses, for example, but some of our elective classes and some things like that, that we really need to operate at a higher level of enrollment. And so that's basically doing that. We looked at all the schedules and projected them forward by a year, including K-8, then 9 through 12. Questions about those two?
Then, 15 and 16, counselor, school counselor and nurse reduction.
And again, when we look at it, and I could say this with every single item and a thousand different times, is that all of these things are things we value, but we really looked at what are things that are not mandated, where you could make some reductions. And in both of these, 15 and 16, those are reductions, those aren't eliminations. And so, it, you know, certainly is for consideration.
Question about the counselor, is that Eureka High School, Zane, Zo, all of the above?
It's all of the above. Zo currently doesn't have a counselor, so it pretty much would be between the middle school and the high school. Counseling is not a mandated service, even though we highly value it, so it's just looking at, currently, we have four FTE in counseling.
What do we have at Zane?
Combined, Zane and Eureka High. We have one at Zane.
One, one FTE?
One FTE, counselor at Zane, and we have a .8 school psychologist.
How about Eureka High?
With Eureka High, we have three FTE counseling, and we have one FTE school psychologist.
I'm just going to chunk in my two cents worth here, in both the school counselor position, nurse, and then it skips to classified, but goes down to guidance tech. I think we're seriously understaffed there. I think that we have schools that are just fighting to keep their heads above the crazy level. I cannot see, I mean, we have reduced, and I was going to ask for numbers, and I figured I was overloading Paul. It's like, we've reduced the amount of support for our, per pupil at these sites. Some of these sites are running with 400 and 500 kids and one guidance tech. I just can't see a cut in that area being good for our schools.
So how many FTEs do we have in nurse and guidance techs?
Richard could probably better help, I could give you a rough estimate, but I think he'd give you an accurate one.
With our school nurses, we have two point, we have two full-time, permanent nurses. We have one nurse that fills a probation for point, probationary position for .5, and a temporary position for about .45. So that effectively means we have three full-time nurses district-wide. However, the actuality is, two of our nurses have dealt with very serious medical conditions in the past couple of years. One of them just returned to us from surgery, one of them is still out. And so, we are making do with two substitute nurses. But the positions that are budgeted are approximately three full-time nurses, and so the recommendation would be to eliminate a .5 of the three.
And just from, you know, historical point of view, we have been as low as two full-time nurses in the district for several years. So we are actually having, we have more FTE this year than we've had for the last couple of years, actually. Doesn't feel like it, I know, but from FTE perspective.
And what about guidance techs?
Guidance techs, we have, as far as I know, we have just one position.
Well, we have, we have guidance tech at Zo Barnum, we have student service guidance techs at each elementary school, that's three hours.
Three hours.
Those are funded at categorically, I'm not sure.
Right.
So the only one we have right here is the categorically funded student service, I mean, general funded, sorry, student service guidance tech.
Wait, say that, okay.
Okay.
You lost me, sorry.
Okay, so the one that's, we have different charts. This chart is, all positions are all programs supported by general funds.
Right.
And so, the one that's on here is the one supported by general funds only.
And where is this?
Zo Barnum.
Because I'd like to respond to what Wendy said. The cost of guidance tech being significantly less than a full counselor. If we're looking at Eureka High School, and I'll just be specific, if we increase the number of guidance techs at Eureka High School, we could reduce the number of counselors.
Yeah, and a couple of years ago, we had both?
Yes.
And at, there was a decision made to not have student service guidance techs at the high school. We brought on a full-time counseling secretary and maintained the school counselors. So it's looking at how you want to staff that office.
And it's, again, not to say that they're not valuable, but they have to provide a service. How can we provide the best service for the least amount of dollars?
That's part of our dilemma.
So on classified, number 17, you have a reduction of five FTEs.
And that was sort of cumulative, there's, some of the things we're looking at is, is looking at positions that are eight hours, for example, and we think we could go down to six, some of those kinds of changes. You know, it's a ballpark figure of reductions that we think we might be able to make, with talking with different, with different folks.
Again, I'm not so sure about the warehouse courier, I don't know what position that is or what they do. I know that we're understaffed with monitors already. I know that the grounds crew does a phenomenal job for a group of two.
Right. Though, that's, that's an increase.
I think there's two. And so, we have our grounds crew that mows our lawns and keeps our schools looking nice, and does all the work to ma, I mean, I cannot believe that they do what they do.
I agree.
At how many sites?
Two. I do agree.
And how do you cut part of a grounds crew?
Well, we have, we operated for several years with one. We made a conscientious decision to bring back the second one a couple of years ago, since I've been at the district office. So it's, again, it's a consideration.
One thing to keep in mind is, we're not doing cuts that we want to do, we're looking at the least worst cuts.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And, you know, ideally, I would not want to make any of them. Absolutely not.
And so, second.
So are we down to 19?
19, secondary clerical staff.
And again, you know, I think this is, is certainly worth looking at, there, we haven't necessarily looked at the staffing ratios of clerical at the secondary levels, both Zane and Eureka High School, yet both of those schools have had considerable declining enrollment. So it's re-looking again on making potential reductions in, at both of those sites, and it really is related to some degree on declining enrollment.
And roughly, how many FTEs do we have of those?
We have at Zane, I believe, one, two, four full-time, and Eureka High, we have eight full-time.
How about district office clerical? How many FTEs do we have there?
Oh, I don't know, right off the top of my head, I'd have to, let me, how many do you have in your office?
I was thinking probably 20, all told, throughout the district office. That much. So then, it's probably more like 15 then.
Want me to go to 21, 22? And basically, as, we've talked about this before as well, but looking at our certificated management and classified management, working less days. And so, just for your consideration, we have given you what five days less would cost, given the sort of an average amount of the combined total for the employees in those areas. Certainly, it's what we've looked at before, so it is something we are bringing back.
How many days do they work now?
It depends.
Are they both the same?
No. It really, it really depends.
Elementary principal's different than Zane, and Zane's different from Eureka High, which is different from the district office.
Right, and the counselors are on it, and they're different, and the psychologists are different, and district office staff are different. So it's anywhere from 182 days, I think, to 220 days, depending on the position.
So we have 182 days of school?
180 with students, correct.
With students.
Actually, it might be 185, I think it's 185. Not school days, how many, a certificate management, the least number of days a certificate management employee works. 185. So they work five days more than what we have kids. Yeah, certificated, not classified.
So right now, average, they work five days more than there are students in classes and...
Some of them are, yeah.
That's not average.
Yeah, that's...
There's no way to...
No. They're distinctly different needs for different levels.
Yeah, and, yep.
So all the elementary principals, though, work the same number of days and...
All but one, because one has a directorship, yes.
And how many days do they work?
I'll look to them. No, what? 205.
205.
How many are they paid for? That's the real question.
No. Okay, they work 365 days, and out of that, they get paid 205. And those are all 12-hour days, mind you. It already is.
As far as retirement this year, are we expecting...
In terms of the certificated, I have two. I just got one, my second one today. And I only count them if I have them in a letter.
And that's elementary or secondary?
Both are secondary.
Thank you.
So then, 22 is the same thing for a classified manager?
Correct.
And you don't have down here the possibility of any furlough days, and what the savings would be there?
One of the things that we haven't done is, we did not indicate bargainable items at this point, until we enter into those topics with our bargaining units. There were probably five or six potential areas, of which furloughs could be one, but what we wanted to bring forward to the board are things that we could do without them necessarily, without them needing to be negotiated.
That's our target, or that's what we've come up with on these?
If we did everything that's on that list.
What's our target, to eliminate the deficit spending in, is it $2,403,000? That's what we're trying to cut out of our budget this time?
My figure today is somewhere between 1.5 to 2 million.
I would like...
So this doesn't represent what we're trying to get to, this is just, here's some ideas, and this is the number that's attached to it.
It's the start of a laundry list, really, and there may be plenty of other things that we still want to put on the table that we haven't come up with, that other folks want to discuss, so it's a start.
I would like a little more detail on the business of the school counselor versus guidance techs at Eureka High School. If you went down to one counselor and two or three guidance techs?
Okay.
What are the savings in that shift?
Can you make sure we get in the difference between a PPS credential and responsibilities that come with that versus a guidance?
I'm very aware of that, Rich.
Okay, so one counselor and like two guidance techs, for an example, just as a snapshot, okay? Okay. Versus the three counselors we currently have.
So, I have one other, a couple of other questions, I mean, this is a pretty lengthy list, but there's a lot of things that aren't on here.
That's what we want, that's why we have extra lines.
Last year, we approved the position of a coach?
It is on the, it's actually on the second page, because it's categorically funded. So if you switch to the second page, we indicated... So if you switch to the second page, we indicated positions that do not come out of general funds. Sorry, third page, second.
Part.
Part, section, thank you. So it, you'll see it on there as number six. So what we tried to do is separate out, you know, what would give us general fund relief, what would give us categorical relief, and separated those out.
But when we're talking about categorical items, these are sweepable categorical items?
In this case, it's, it's Title I and, so some is and some isn't. Some aren't, anyway.
So if we have a general fund structural deficit, and we're cutting things that are categorically funded, that are totally restricted, what does that gain us? I'm confused.
Well, and, and in a black and white way, it doesn't, but there's possibilities that, you know, because you have to worry about supplements, supplant, and all those things, and it may be that, that our priorities on what we fund in categoric, out of categorical shift, because of some of the changes we've had to make in our general fund, like what we did with the library techs several years ago, as an example. They were a general fund expenditure, and we basically, we closed our elementary libraries. And then, because they were closed, we were able to bring them back under categoricals, because at that point, we were no longer supplanting, and we could utilize them. So it might give you a little bit of wiggle room in the categorical area to do some things like that.
I'm trying to follow what you're saying, but that sounds like it's the opposite, that if we eliminate them from a general fund position, we may receive funding for them in a categorical way. Here, we're talking about doing the opposite, eliminating a categorical.
It, it, yes. We're saying, these are currently funded categorically. If those positions or those services currently went away, it's possible that some of the general fund positions might be able to then be supported by the money released by the changes in your categoricals.
I love this budget.
I know.
You ought to know.
So, I'll just use as a, I mean, I could use a.
I mean, that's roughly a teacher right there.
Right, okay. So I guess as, as an example, and this is not to indicate any preference or choice or, I'm just trying to do maybe a little bit of concrete example. So let's say that we wanted to, I'm trying to look at her example. Let's say we ended up having elementary enrollment at 29, or 27 in, in the primary grades, and we wanted to look at lowering our class size. If we had, you know, some categorical funds potentially to support lowering class size, we might end up being able to pick up some teachers' teaching time to do that. But if we don't have the categorical funds released, because they're no longer attached to things, we couldn't do it. Or if they continue to be attached to things, we couldn't do it. And I, and that's just, I'm not saying, suggesting that's what we should do or have to do, but I'm trying to, to give an example of how you could take something that's currently in general funds and potentially move it into a restricted fund.
Are, are library techs still funded through Title I?
They're still categorically funded, yes.
Yes. And I'd like to add on the, the use of categorical funds, we have to be very, very careful that the, there are two different actions. What we cannot do is, in the same action, decide to use categorical for something that we're currently now paying with general fund money. The first action has to be making a decision to eliminate or reduce.
Yep.
A particular service or position, period, because of the lack of funds. And then, at a later date, a later time, we can visit the other decision. But we have to be very careful to make sure that those are two separate decisions. So the message with regard to categoricals is, how can we be most flexible in the future with categorical fund money? That's basically the, the primary question to consider.
Any questions on the categorical fund page?
I think the majority of these on the categorical fund page fit into that category, that the potential for regaining some funding elsewhere is attached to what you have put down on this.
Could be.
With one exception, the instructional coach is primarily funded out of a restricted account, which is mandated, set aside for professional development, Title I. And we could, we would still have to, we would still have to use $140,000 of district Title I for professional development, regardless of what we did with.
That's because of the PI status?
Yeah.
That's part of that money that we're mandated to.
Yep. It's complicated. Any other questions on that page?
So if I read this page correctly, then you're talking about just putting the money from Winsler and Worthington into the general fund?
No.
So what does this page represent?
Not quite, or not necessarily. And the other issue that we obviously were going to have to deal with are some of the premises projects and maintenance projects that sit out there, and a lot of those times, things would be one time, and therefore, I wouldn't call them part of the formal structural deficit irrespective their expenditures, and it would be a drain on cash. So, for instance, if Worthington's already under contract right now, for better or for worse, with the, the lease purchase option, if Worthington were to sell and we were to realize that $800,000, it would need to go towards another premises project, but it could certainly release some of the strain that we may experience on the general fund if we have to tap the general fund for those projects instead of this particular revenue source. So that's kind of where we were going with it. The Winsler property was a wild guess in terms of what might be a, a value there. Obviously presupposes other things. The Lincoln remodel, I think the, the significant thing there is not the fact necessarily of bringing it into general fund, but moving forward with that project, at least, as we understand from talking to the architects and their estimate, would be an additional $300,000 encroachment on the general fund. So that's why that one is, is up there at this point.
And we projected three years out, was the Lincoln remodel in any of our three-year projections?
Yeah, so at, at first interim, we had, had completely spent the, the 1.9 that was in capital fund 40 on the Lincoln remodel.
On the Lincoln?
Okay, say that again?
On the Lincoln?
No, you're talking about Marshall.
No. So for 1213, in, at first interim, in the multi, the first multi-year projection, we had anticipated spending 1.9 on the Lincoln remodel.
Right.
And we did that?
We didn't spend.
Oh, okay.
It's in the budget.
And that's general fund money?
No, that, that money's in the, the capital fund 40 right now. But again, the, the, the additional stress on the general fund would be if we were to move forward with that remodel, the way it's currently configured, it would be an additional $300,000 worth of expense above the 1.9 that's in capital fund 40.
I think this is what Lori referred to the other day, that the projection is the remodel's 2.2.
2.2.
Minimum, not 1.9.
Barring any other expectations?
And to maybe take that one step further, at least as we committed the ending fund balance at the, I think, the previous board meeting, my, my expectation, at least as we put together, and are putting together our second interim and our multi-year projection based on the second interim, that we would not have the use of the, we would not do the remodel next year, but those funds would be encumbered, so to speak. And if that's not the case, then we should, I should probably get direction on that, so I don't change that in the multi-year projection upcoming.
So one of the things that the money from selling Worthington could free up the encroachment would be, for example, the $300,000.
Yes.
Of the architect fees for the Lincoln remodel.
Absolutely.
So that it could proceed.
Correct. Once we, once we have it, absolutely.
We're also collecting, we're, we're charging rent on the Worthington property. Is that money going into the general fund, or is it going into a capital fund?
General fund, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. And that's like $3,000 a month?
$3,500, I think.
$3,500 a month, with the potential that we're going to increase that if they want.
I don't think that they are going to lease any additional building. They're going to wait and see if they get the grant to fund their purchase. So they've delayed that additional lease.
And the dates on that, I believe, we signed the contract June of 2011, and now we're, have, they have two years to exercise the option. So, June 2013 is the decision, drop dead date. Got it.
And is the, the 2.2 million for the Lincoln remodel, is that the full initial remodel? Because we had talked about it, the facilities.
The scaled, scaled down model.
No, that's, that's an incredibly scaled back model.
Okay.
Just to the basics, and it really only the main wing. It's not even looking at the two external wings.
But it is, it is enough of a remodel that we could then house both the adult ed and the Zoe Barnum programs?
Yes.
Just not as comfortable as.
Right.
The other thing, and, there's no more questions on that. One of the things that we have been doing as, as a staff is really, really looking at, where are there ways that we can, I don't know what you want to call it, but, but we looked at account by account by account and making sure that, that if there was a vacancy that should have been eliminated, we've eliminated. We've really done some tightening up of those kinds of account items, and I think Paul gave us some, some positive news in, in that direction of, and I, I know you've got the numbers, I don't, if you want to share that.
Sure. So we, at first interim, projected a structural deficit of roughly 2.5 million for this year. And in going back, and as Leanne says, kind of line by line, looking at, for instance, if there was a material and supply budget of $50,000 for a particular department or something like that, what's the expectation that they're going to fully spend that budget? Did the same thing with contracted services, traveling conferences, vacant positions throughout the organization, and with a happy result of being able to trim about $800,000 off of that structural deficit. So, at least as it stands, I believe at this point, I think we're looking at somewhere about 1.7, 1.8 million as our targeted structural deficit for 2011, 12. And the great news about that, if that number holds up, that would, in essence, become a three-year savings. So we may have been able to push, push the, the pencil pretty hard to come up with, you know, roughly $2 million worth of savings over a three-year period.
So you're talking about a possibility of $800,000 carryover?
$800,000 effect year to year, so carryover, yeah.
Which then means that we can reduce the expenses for the following two years as well.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
And when you said we were looking at needing to cut 1.5, then that sounds like that's after taking that into account.
That's right.
Yes.
So I, I was thinking two to two and a half previously, and I'm happy to revise that down to one and a half to two at this point. Still, obviously, a ways to go, and still concerned for what happens if the governor's proposal doesn't go through and the, the trigger reductions come into play, but it's still a much better number to be dealing with than, than the one we were dealing with at first interim.
Okay. Because I had remembered you were talking about up to two and a half million in deficit for the, for the year, so.
Yeah.
Why slower?
Yep.
So where do we go from here?
Well, to me, it, if, you've given us certain direction and certain requests for clarification, some additional information, which is what we were hoping to get. I didn't get a sense from the board at this point that there's anything in particular that you're, you know, you're still open to having everything on the list. I mean, we're not making decisions tonight, so it still is, but what I would say is that for us to be able to take a fiscal stability plan, even if it changes and is revised, some decisions regarding some things should be made at the next board meeting as best as we can. It may not be the final plan, but we've got to take a plan to the county when we do our second interim.
And that meeting is February 28th, you were suggesting?
Well, our next board meeting is next Wednesday.
So you're wanting us to start making decisions then, at that time, or you're coming back to us with more information at that time, or?
And I would say a combination of both. And it may be that out of the 16 items, that you are able to make some decisions, about five of them. Anything to help us then take those forward, and then as we continue, and more than likely have to do a third interim, we will, we will have a better idea of exactly what that plan would look like.
Okay, so let's try to keep the rest of the agenda for that next week's meeting light, if we can, to allow.
So far, it is. So far, it is. But I do anticipate ongoing conversations about this for the rest of the school year, really.
So our February 28th meeting, is Fran able to make that meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody can make February.
Is there a possibility we could move it to 6 o'clock instead of 5?
Yeah.
Makes it a bit easier for me.
Okay. It's fine with me.
That's fine.
Right.
So is there any other information that the board would like that we haven't gathered with our conversations?
I still want that historical data.
You can always email us, too. Email us, too.
Are we ready to be adjourned?
Do we need? Oh.
Nobody's objecting, so we're adjourned.